Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is now four minutes after two on Thursday, November 10, 2016. Purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 393-33 introduced by myself, an act to transfer with compensation a portion of the lot identified as Anderson Communications Annex Number One, a municipality of Dedido, an area of plus or minus 70,000 square meters or 17 acres, from the Guam Incestral Lands Commission inventory of Spanish Crown lands to the Guam Waterworks Authority for the purpose of construction of the expansion of the Northern District wastewater treatment plant and to rezone the transferred portion from the current hotel zone to public facility zone. We will also be hearing a second bill, Bill Number 394-33, also introduced by Thomas Siata, an act to amend Title 21 relative to the confirmation of Guam Incestral Lands Commissioners. Notice of today's public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on November 3, 2016. That's the five-day notice, and November 7, 2016, the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 17, 2016. Please address testimonies to Senator Tom, Thomas Siata, Chairperson of the Committee on Lands. And can be dropped to the mailboxes here at the legislature or emailed to office@senatorata.org. We'll go ahead and we'll start the public hearing now. Before we do that, I'm going to go ahead and just give an orientation on Bill 393. So, the area that we're talking about is, this here is up the Dos Amontes area. I believe this here is where the Guam Waterworks Sewer Treatment Plant is currently located. And the Crown lands that we're talking about to be sold to Guam Waterworks is this area here, an area of about 17 acres. The bill also, in addition to authorizing the transfer of that property with compensation, the sale of that land to Guam Waterworks Authority, further requires that the proceeds from the sale of the, well, first of all, the appraisal, all the costs for appraisal, for the surveying, shall be borne by Guam Waterworks Authority. The purchase price and transfer agreement shall, GWA shall work with Incestral Lands to determine an appropriate compensation. And that this agreement shall be finalized within 120 days. Failure to achieve an agreement may result in the reversion of the property to the Incestral Lands Commission. The bill further specifies the use of the proceeds from the land sale, and specifically, the bill specifies that the proceeds from the sale shall be used for the purpose of repairing Spanish Crown lands, lot numbers, and there's a number of them. They're all in the municipality of Baragota. Can you put that slide up? Never mind. The Crown lands are up in the radio Baragota area, and intent is that the proceeds from the land sale is to be used to begin the development of that particular area, to include the surveying of the property, of the access roads and utility easements, the recordation of the grants of easements and accompanying maps, and the actual construction of the access and utility easements. So these here, this here is Route 15. I believe this here is Hawaiian Rock, and over on the other side, this here is the Navy golf course, and this here is all Crown lands that have not yet been surveyed. So the bill is mandating that the proceeds of the sale of the property at Dos Amontes shall then be used to basically begin the basic development tasks in this area, surveying, putting in the utility access, and the utility and, and the access roads, utility easements and access roads. Okay, so with that, I have signing up to provide testimonies Ms. Evangeline Luhon from Guam Waterworks. Bobby Cruz, were you going to testify? No? Okay. And then I have Mr. Michael Borja from Department of Land Management. And I do want to recognize the Chairperson of the Incestral Lands Commission, Ms. Orlino? Or is that Tony's? It's Ms. Orlino, right? You're the Chairperson? No, but I'm recognizing that you are present in the room. And then, of course, we also have Mr. Eclavea, Ms. Westling, and the lady in the dark glasses. Are you also on the commission?
Maria Cruz.
Maria Cruz. You're on the commission also, right? So, the commission is represented here today. Oh, and, oh, and the new chairman, or Mr. Tony, Mr. Tony Ada, is also present here. I noticed you, did you want to, anybody from the Incestral Lands, or is it going to be just Mr. Borja that will be speaking?
Thank you for all three of you.
Well, all three of you can come up. There's enough, there's enough up here. Okay, fine. We got four chairs up there, so two from Guam Waterworks and two from the Incestral Let's go ahead and we'll start with Guam Waterworks, basically to give your testimony, why you need the land and all that. Make your case.
Can I introduce who we also have? Good afternoon, Senator. I'm Evangeline Luhon. I'm the Senior Regulatory Analyst for the Guam Waterworks. I'm going to provide, read the testimony of our General Manager, who is off island right now, but together with, together with me are our Chief Engineer, Tom Cruz, and our Land Agent, Bobby Cruz, as well. And then, of course, our Chairman.
Good afternoon. Senator Ada, thank you for the opportunity to provide comment to Bill 393-33. The Guam Waterworks Authority, in accordance with the policy established by the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, has been working over the last six years to ensure that the Authority's infrastructure is prepared to accommodate the growth anticipated with the alignment of the Department of Defense facilities and activities on Guam. As a result of these efforts, GWA's coordination with the Office of Economic Adjustment, Department of Defense, GWA has been able to secure grant funding to allow for the execution of several water and wastewater infrastructure projects, which will help to improve and expand our infrastructure and enhance our ability to protect our marine resources, and more importantly, the Northern Guam lands aquifer. The largest and most important of these projects is the upgrade of the Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant to secondary treatment, as a secondary treatment facility capable of meeting the permit requirements of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System for all current and anticipated future wastewater flow from both the military and civilian populations in northern and central Guam. The land identified in the bill was selected to provide sufficient land area for the needed upgrade and treatment process structures, and because of its proximity to our existing GWA sewer interceptor and trunk lines, the Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant, and the effluent pipe and deep ocean outfall, the property will enable GWA to upgrade its existing treatment headwork solids handling process, equipment, install new primary treatment oxidation structures, secondary clarifiers, sludge digestors, UV disinfection process equipment, as well as construct required stormwater detention basins to address U.S. EPA's Clean Water Act requirements. The upgrade to secondary treatment is critical to GWA's continuing programs of infrastructure improvements to enhance system performance, rate pair service, and protection of public health and safety. Over the last several months, the CCU leadership and GWA staff have been working closely with the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to identify and address concerns of the commission regarding the proposed legislation, as well as discussing possible options for ensuring that Incestral Lands Commission receives appropriate value for such lands so not to adversely affect and assist in the enhancements of their programs. Bill 393-33 would enable and require GWA to work closely with Incestral Lands Commission to develop appropriate compensation packages over the next 120 days. Further, GWA is prepared to fund the required property assessment and surveys to ensure the competent property transfer and benefit to both Incestral Lands Commission and the people of Guam. Grant funds for acquisition and management and design of the Northern District Wastewater Treatment Improvement Project is in place, and GWA is in the process of securing consultants to execute the project immediately to ensure that the upgrades are in place in time for Department and Defense Facility realignment efforts. With the realignment, Guam will see an increase in population as well as an increase in commercial and construction activity. These projects will support anticipated development and contribute significantly to sustain sustainability of the island's economy by meeting future demands on water and wastewater infrastructure and improving treatment performance for the protection of our precious water and marine resources. In addition, the upgrades to the Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant, that begins with the acquisition of the property identified in the bill. We will also enable GWA to support future power generation facilities with tertiary treatment of affluent reuse as water cooling systems, further enhancing the protection of the marine resources. Based on the foregoing, GWA expresses full support of the bill as presented and respectfully requests your vote in favor of these bills. Thank you to Senator Ada and his staff for moving this critical legislation forward. We look forward to working with the Incestral Lands Commission and their administration to come to an agreement to appropriately compensate this, the commission for the property. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the bill. Feel free to contact our General Manager, Miguel C. Berdalu, if you have any questions.
Good afternoon, Senator Tom Ada, Chairman of the Committee. I'd just like to add that as the, as a Chairman of the CCU, we are in full support of the acquisition of this property. It is needed, and we are under some time constraints to get this done in anticipation of the military buildup that is planned for the northern end of the island. It also, the buildup plan comes with, other than just this one project, it also includes a rehabilitation of an existing sewer collection line from Anderson all the way down to this facility, as well as four monitoring wells. I'd also like to point out that we've agreed with Incestral Lands to survey the lot, and not just the lot that we're acquiring. I don't have one of the pointers, but if I could just stand up for a minute to, this is the, this is the piece of property that we're interested, the shaded piece, but we've agreed to survey this portion out, the remaining portion right here, and we've also agreed to survey this, this portion down here. And that, that would provide a map for all three portions. We would cut out the shaded piece for the piece that we need, but Incestral Lands would end up with a map for the remaining portion on the top and the remaining triangle piece on the bottom, that they could then use and say they now have a map that delineates the boundaries and everything for those pieces of property. The other thing I would suggest, and I don't, I don't know if we've got included in the bill, is that these, these, these portions be, well, we would like to address our portion and determine it to be public facility use, but the portion up here could certainly be used for light industry and some other things. I would leave that up to Incestral Lands as to their desire for the land use of that property, but it would be adjacent to the upgrades of the sewage treatment plant, so it really needed to be, it needs to be something that blends well with that. And the triangle piece down here, that's a little bit along the roadway. I'm open whatever Incestral Lands want, but we will at least have a map that delineates the boundaries that they can use, so that when they identify what they would like to use, they can say that that's, you know, these are the, this is the lot they're talking about, and they could then come to you or through Land Management for proper zoning. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
I just have, can you get back my pointer, please? I just, I just have two questions for Guam Waterworks. First of all, what is the requirement that is driving the need to, basically to expand the Waterworks facility? Is it just to provide capacity, or is this an EPA requirement to now go into secondary and tertiary treatment?
It's a combination of things. First off, it is to address the marine buildup and gives us added capacity, which will also help the civilian community, but more importantly, it's the desire of U.S. EPA to bring this plant to secondary treatment. We've talked to U.S. EPA, they have a desire for our two big plants, the Northern Wastewater Treatment Plant and the plant down here in Hagenya, to go to secondary, and we've talked to them over this, and their view is it's the law. The law requires this. So therefore, we've said to them that we would, we are not in a position to do this right now. We argued that when we started the first stipulated order back in 2004, I believe, or 2003, that nothing was mentioned of secondary treatment for these plants. We produced plans that said we would take them to advanced primary treatment permit requirements, and they said they agreed, and we have since taken them to advanced primary treatment permit requirements, and we are meeting those permit requirements. They came out, I think, two years ago? About two years ago, where they said, "We're denying all waivers to allow locations such as Guam." There's also Honolulu, San Diego, Alaska, where they had waivers to allow plants that were advanced primary treatment to discharge into the ocean. These were unique situations, and they said, "We're disallowing all waivers from this point out." We have the opportunity to get this plant upgraded to secondary treatment and have the military buildup pay for that upgrade. And that, just to give you an idea of cost, it's around $160 million.
Okay. Is that, is that federal grant that's available just for the physical plant itself, or does it also include the cost of the land?
It includes all costs that we have. It was broken down into three pieces, and there is a grant application we applied for. The grant application for the sewage collection line is totally applied for. We got that because we knew what that was, the four monitoring walls. We applied, we got that, we knew what that cost would be. For this particular project, we have only applied for the first amount of money, which I believe is about 55?
Yeah.
About $50 million. That is to do the acquisition of the land that we needed, as well as to do the design of the facility and all the engineering work that had to be done. And then we would amend that grant to apply for the rest of the money. Once we did the design, that would give us an idea of how much money would be needed. The estimates have always ranged around $155 to $165 million.
Okay.
Okay? And that would be the same amount for the Hagenya plant, but we've told them that we can't do that because we just, the rate payers do not have the capacity anymore to borrow more money than we've already planned to do all the court order projects.
Okay. So this, this upgrade and improvement project will not result in any kind of a rate increase?
That's the point. It won't result in any rate increase to the people of Guam, and it is a benefit because it takes a plant. They're, they're driving this process. It takes a plant that, that they want to go to secondary treatment and gets there right now.
Okay.
And we've told them we couldn't do it now, but they said, "We found a way to do this," and they're going to take it to secondary treatment now.
Okay.
So it's very important, that's the importance of the project.
All right, fine. Thank you. All right. Incestral Lands?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Borja. I'm the Director of the Department of Land Management. On Bill Number 393-33, the intentions of this bill does several things. Number one, it transfers land from Guam Incestral Lands Commission Land Bank Trust to the Guam Waterworks Authority for compensation. The second is it allocates the proceeds of the land for improving other lots in Baragota. And the third thing it does is it rezones the transferred property. Based on the intent of this bill and its exhibits, the Department of Land Management has the following comments. On the land transfer, the Guam Incestral Lands Commission Board of Commissioners met and discussed the transfer of lands with the Guam Waterworks Authority and have tentatively agreed to the following. The land transfer shall be compensated by Guam Waterworks Authority for fair market value. The Guam Waterworks Authority shall bear all costs of land appraisals, land surveys, and land registration. As noted by Chairman Duenez, this portion of land that's being sought after is but a portion of a greater lot, and the entire lot is not only unsurveyed, but it's also unregistered. So that whole process, in order to portion out and separate out the desired lot, you have to, you have to survey the greater part of it as well as register it. So those processes will, will definitely have to take place, and Department of Land Management stands ready to assist in those efforts as well with both our survey teams and our, with our, with going through the land registration process, because we have teams that do that already. The payment of the land shall be placed in the Land Bank Trust, and Guam Incestral Lands Commission requests legislative authorization to reinvest the compensation for the purchase of the property for continued benefit of the Land Bank Trust beneficiaries. Number two, concerning the use of the proceeds of the land sale to conduct improvements in Baragota, the Department of Land Management has serious reservations with Section 2-F of Bill Number 393. This section identifies lots that have already been returned to ancestral owners to benefit from the, from land improvements and infrastructure development and to improve easements not directly adjacent to Crown lands, but for other returned properties. On August 16, 2013, the Superior Court of Guam issued a decision and order for civil case number CB 1461-10, or GANJI versus the Government of Guam and the Guam Incestral Lands Commission. The court struck down elements of public law 30-158, which granted Guam Incestral Land Commission Land Bank properties, Land Bank Trust properties to dispossess ancestral landowners to extinguish their land taking claims. It held that beneficiaries of the land trust do indeed have private property rights in the lots, and the stream of revenues generated by the lots sufficient to trigger the protections of the takings clause. Fundamentally, the Guam Incestral Lands Commission and the Land Bank Trust were created to return excess government lands or compensate dispossessed ancestral landowners with revenue generated from Crown lands and other non-incestral lands. By directing the use of the funds from the land purchased to improve properties of ancestral landowners who had their lands returned would violate the intent and purpose of the Guam, of the Incestral Lands Commission and the Land Bank Trust, since these landowners of returned lands are no longer beneficiaries of the Land Bank Trust. Inclusion of this section of the bill would be contrary to the GANJI case, and we highly recommend its removal. In fact, because of public law 30-158 and the resulting GANJI case, the Incestral Lands Commission is potentially liable for legal costs of the plaintiff in the situation created by the legislature greatly jeopardizing the Land Bank Trust. Number three, additionally, Bill, this bill intends to legislatively rezone identified lot from hotel zone to public facility zone. The original creation of all the zoning in this particular area was the result of the approval of a master plan adopted by the Guam Land Use Commission. Due to the intense and significant nature of the proposed use of the land, of this identified lot, and its direct impact to the surrounding landowners, the Department of Land Management highly recommends the rezoning of this land be processed as an application to rezone with the Guam Land Use Commission. Through the zone change application process, surrounding landowner notification activities will be engaged, vetting by the Application Review Committee will commence, and municipal public hearings will be scheduled. In this way, the overall integrity of the master plan that rezoned the region will remain intact. Finally, the Department of Land Management finds the intent and purpose of this bill to be necessary for the public interest and respects the will and the intent of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to protect the interests of the Land Bank Trust beneficiaries. Our support for this bill is conditional on the application of our recommendations. Thank you.
Can you clarify that? The support is conditional?
Well, we believe that Section 2 EF, or Section 2-F, which directs the monies received to be appropriated for the use of, of infrastructure improvements in another area, that it has serious, it could seriously violate what the intent of the Land Bank Trust was, as was demonstrated in the GANJI case. It's not that we don't want to do that, but in that GANJI case, that was overturned by the, where the public law was overturned by the court, it's resulted in still pending litigation that we have not yet found how much we have to pay for somebody else's lawyer to win the case on behalf of his clients, and that this would be falling into the same kind of basket as that previous public law, and that's why we have reservations about that section of the law.
So actually, actually, your recommendation is to delete Section F?
Correct.
Yeah. And then the rezoning through the Guam Land, the rezoning from hotel zone to public facility, you're recommending that that be put through the Guam Land Use Commission?
Right. That's what the, that's what the Planning Division has requested, just because that whole place has already been master planned, and the master plan went through the whole approval process, and it's just basically to keep that master plan intact, especially since the use of this, this particular piece of land is of some intensity, that it just behooves for the owners of that area to go through the proper notifications, not to surprise anybody in the end, even though we are having public hearings and even though, you know, there may be some news articles, it just is one of those issues where we don't want it to flow back. And there's a lot of areas in that immediate area, just like this current piece of property, that are zoned hotel, so we just have to, we just want to do our due diligence and prefer it that way.
Yeah. Now, you also indicated that instead of directing the use of those funds, that it really should by default go to the Land Bank?
To the Land Bank Trust.
For distribution.
For distribution.
What has to happen before the money can be distributed?
Well, there still needs to be rules and regulations that have to be completed, and that process is already underway. It's still pending for review by the Attorney General's Office. We haven't received any feedback yet from them, although we did submit it to them a number of months ago. So we're just awaiting their feedback as to what they feel needs to be done before we can, we can present it to the Guam Legislature. But the, the rules and regulations were created, passed by the commissioners, and then submitted to the to the Attorney General for review, so we're just...
How long ago has it been since it's been submitted?
Since before the summer, or since around the summertime.
Last year?
Early summer of, about May or June.
Oh, this summer?
Yes.
Okay. Does that, the other thing is, does that, before that, before the funds are distributed from the Land Bank, does that require legislative appropriation?
Well, for the distribution to the dispossessed landowners?
Well, that, the commission is going to take X number of dollars for distribution, or can it just, does it have that authority now to do that, once you've gotten the rules and regs passed?
Well, that's what the authority, yeah, that was what the rules and regs were supposed to dictate. And it spelled out, in just giving you a preview, that there will always be some amount remaining in the bank, and that when it reaches to a certain level, then that amount can be distributed. But determining who would be receiving it, determining how much and how it will be dispersed was what the rules and regulations were supposed to identify, and it was, it's still pretty controversial amongst the commissioners, but nevertheless, we got it put down to an agreement.
Is it possible for the committee to get a copy of, although it's still in draft form? The AG may be looking at certain aspects of the rules and regs. When it comes down to the legislature, the legislature may be looking at something different, and so if it deems that, you know, there may be something that probably needs to be...
I'll send you the draft that was submitted.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Ada?
Senator, I have a question on the testimony in terms of the zoning. I can wait until later on if you want.
Okay.
I just need to ask a question, okay?
All right.
Officer, congratulations on your new term.
Thank you.
The letter that was written by the Director and delivered by Ms. Lohan?
Yes.
Where he says he supports the bill. What we have here is that, and also she mentioned that we've been working for months, they've been working for months with the Ancestral Lands Commission. The bill that the Guam Waterworks brought to our ancestral lands meeting, they were drafting that bill, and we had a back-and-forth discussion. It was revised very little, and so that's the bill that we were looking at while the bill that you introduced was put in. So we compared the two, and we thought that they were pretty quick in letting you look at the bill, but there were those differences.
Section F was not in the version that you guys were working on?
Yeah. Okay. So then, we agree that for a public use, right, it complies with land being taken, quote-unquote, because it's going to benefit the entire population. So we agree with that. And then, in there, of course, Waterworks said that they would take care of the surveying of the property. Two surveyors will be chosen, one by Land Management and one by them. And then, there's still a question of how to resolve if there's any difference.
Nominate average.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay. So anyway, yeah, the appraiser, they're going to pay for the appraiser too. Yeah. Okay. So, in the discussion, the proceeds of the fund, the Land Bank and Land Bank Trust, the Land Bank is, or the lands that Ancestral Lands has to take care of the dispossessed landowners that will, may never get their land back.
Right.
They become beneficiaries of the trust.
Understand.
And in the way, to your earlier question about the distribution of the funds, the way I understood the trust works is that if you get ready to distribute funds, all the beneficiaries, not just like one beneficiary can get distribution, it's got to be given to all the beneficiaries. So, this piece of property is in the Land Bank, but because it's needed for a public purpose and GWA is going to buy it, it now becomes, it's funds, so it becomes Land Bank Trust money. You just converted the land to money.
Correct.
We did want the money to be flexible, this money to, in order to alleviate the shrinking of the Land Bank, lands that we can lease out for, to generate funds, we wanted to be placed into the bill that with these funds, we are allowed, we can be allowed to purchase other land or other income-producing property so that it can generate more money for the trust. So, we have, okay, yeah, we do have a resolution that outlines what I was referring to, and so that's the one part having to do with what can we do with the, with this, after the land is sold. Going to the bill, now heading over to using the funds to prepare these properties up at Baragata, Manilo Baragata, I looked at it, and I, yeah, I marked out the previous map that we had, the ones that were marked with blue dots were deemed to be...
The other map?
Yeah. On that Google Earth image, those are...
Can you get the other map, the one that shows the highlighted area? There you go. Well, did you want?
Yes.
But that, the highlighted area?
Those highlighted areas, I went through the bill and I marked out the properties, and that's, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight lots out of twelve that was cited in the bill. The front part, 2205, 2205-1, 2208, and 2215-R2, I could not look, I mean, I located in the map, it's all the way in the top, but they're very tiny pieces, and according to what was put here, I didn't see that it was designated as ancestral lands property, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure why the properties are put in there. Our concern is that the favoring of one small group of landowners, which is up in Baragata, as with the case, the reason why that case was, I'm not sure if it's, it's not yet closed, it's under appeal.
Are there other crown lands other than what's in radio Baragata?
Yes, there are. So like N5D across the street, up in that area?
No, but, so it's in this general vicinity where you have the ancestral, my, I guess the point of what was driving Section F of the bill?
Yeah.
Was that there's a large piece of property there, which right now hasn't been, as I understand it, hasn't been surveyed. There was probably some concern that there may be encroachment going on, and until we get that thing surveyed, we really don't know where the points are, and that, and that there seems to be a lot of development going on there, and that maybe the ancestral lands can more quickly start turning that into a revenue generating. But I don't want to, I don't, I understand where you guys are coming from. I mean, if the ancestral lands wants to use the proceeds from the sale to go buy land someplace else, that's, I mean, that's, you guys make that decision. This was a recommendation to try and point it in that direction so that we can start getting that area developed. The bottom line of the bill is GWA needs that ancestral lands property at Dos Amontes. This, how it's to be used, the law right now says that the proceeds would go into the Land Bank, and we could leave it at that.
Yeah. Yeah, we agree with what Waterworks wants to do. One more thing having to do with the appraisers. Before it's, what do you call that, rezoned to public use, I would like the appraisers to appraise the hotel zone designation, so the bank, Land Bank can get the best possible price. So, now, going back to taking care of this problem here, right, as with the developer, in this case, Waterworks, and down up Laris Point and over at the PD Junction there, whenever a, in the case of those, those are leases, right? Mattson?
And those are already revenue generating properties?
And they're revenue generating, but when they come and they discuss what they want to do with us, we, in every case, we put it in there that you take care of the survey, right?
Sure.
Okay. So that's what we've been doing all this time as our pattern for really trying to get as much as we can for the beneficiaries of the trust.
Of course.
Yeah. So then, in the public law 2545 that established ancestral lands, it also established the Land Bank, and then the board members, or the commission, has another head, they act as trustees for the Land Bank. And then the other part is what they call a landowner's recovery fund. And initially, this discussion made me need to go do some, some more research on this landowner's recovery fund, because the only thing I was aware about was what was in 2545. There is a landowner's recovery fund, and it's in 12 GCA, Chapter 74. I found it at the Guam Code Annotated website with the courts. So in 12 GCA, it's entitled "The Landowner's Recovery Fund."
What section of 12 GCA?
Chapter 74.
Section, section what?
Would that be, oh, yeah, 7401, 74101. It's a whole, the entire chapter addresses it. When we had, on our previous hearing, we already understood that the landowner's recovery fund, there's no, don't ask the government to put money in the landowner's recovery fund because it's tight, the budget is tight. The landowner's recovery fund, the actual framers of this public law 2545, you could tell that they thought about it. The, so, for the one part of the commissioner's job is if land was returned, find the owner, get it back to them, after they go through proving that they own the land. The other part is for those whose lands were taken and may never get their lands taken, we need to generate funds and compensate them that way.
Right.
Right? So that's why the landowner's recovery fund was put in there, because it was intended for the land, I read it to be that the landowners that got their money back, how can they, how can they survey their land if they, they got the land but didn't have the money to pay for a surveyor? So the landowner's recovery fund is intended to provide a pool of funds to loan, to loan it to the landowners, so they can go pay for their surveyor and whatever they need to do to, you know, open up the way, their way into the properties. In addition to that, as I read and looked, I found other, more helpful information, right? I came across Executive Order 2002-19, and it's relative to ancestral land use and administration. And I'm not going to go through the whole executive order, but there is one paragraph, or a couple of paragraphs here, whereas many of the properties being returned lack viable access with some parcels being landlocked, and whereas recorded lot boundaries bisect existing paved roads that are presently in, presently used for access to adjacent, adjacent properties, and whereas recorded lot boundaries bisecting, bisect existing houses. So it says there that we give the original landowner back his property, but there might be something that was put in place there by the government, and so if there was a road there and then they got their property and people are using it, that's one of the issues where if they close the road, nobody's going to go in, right? This executive order talks about land planning, right? And so, the, I need to come back to the landowner's recovery, recovery fund, because it, what do you call that, it flows. In order to address all these things that were identified in this executive order, something called the Improvement District Law in 21 GCA, Chapter 69, talks about when a piece of property owners are wanting to, I mean, to help them provide access and develop their lands, there's a process that they need to go through so that the returned properties are not, that are not personally zoned and lack zoning, returned properties that are not personally zoned and lack zoning could lead to chaotic development, right? We want to develop it, but we don't want to have, like, total chaos in the area. So it's covered in these, these executive orders and code. So, the, and for those landowners to get their, get into their properties, we know that there are some landlocked owners, this Improvement District Law makes for a platform for everybody to get together, and let's talk about drawing the access so everybody benefits, right? And that's been done as what Deputy Director Kamau Tu Dave said, it's a matter of getting everybody to agree, right? The tabletop drawing is already in there, and so then the next question is, how are we going to open and who's going to pay for it? So what I found further in the landowner's recovery fund, which I wasn't aware of, I don't think my colleagues were aware of it either, otherwise they would have brought it up, is that it has a section which is 74110 entitled "Source of Funds." This is on 12 GCA, Chapter 74, 74110. So in there, it goes, "Revenues obtained by the government pursuant to the license fee imposed by 11 GCA, Section 22202, shall be the source of funding for the appropriation made in Section 7401 of this chapter." So I, when I looked at Section 222 of 11 GCA, and what that is, is a license fee imposed for the following amusement devices, which are operating to produce revenue in Guam. So as this public law was being put together, right, they say, "Okay, give the land back to the original landowners if we have it to give it, and then provide a way, provide a way to, or make a way to generate monies from those crown lands to pay the ancestral landowners that may never get their land back." But for the ones that got their land back... And, but for the ones that got their land back, and if they can't survey their land, we can help them by giving them a loan, right? And of course they'd have to pay it back, but the, then the question is, well, and the initial, when it was initially opened, they appropriated some money in there. But how do you keep it going if, because there are other uses for the landowner's recovery fund? Where is it going to get replenished from? And it distinct provided that the license fees for pit mode machines and coin operated machines and all those, there's some fee there to fund the landowner's recovery fund so that they can give loans to original landowners who already received their land but need a way to pay for surveying and to, to, to access their land. Now, the, the return of lands to original landowners wasn't really, if, if 25, Public Law 2545 wasn't created, there would be no way, the government would just, Government of Guam would just keep the land, right? But the legislature at the time said highest and best use. That's what the federal government said. It's got to be for highest and best use. So they, they, the rationale is highest and best use is you give it to the original landowner and let them develop it, right? And then it'll increase the tax base. And then that's how it, it would generate funds back into the government's treasury. So unless the, the landowners survey their properties, they cannot, I believe some of them, or maybe a lot of them are still not paying taxes because then it's subdivided, right? How do we, how do we persuade them to get their lands subdivided so that we can, the governments can start assessing taxes so that highest and best use is, is achieved? And, and the tax base for the government is achieved, right? That's a, that's a challenge because there's a lot of emotional and personal feelings by people. So, but from what I understand in this area in Baragata, a lot of, I think everybody, they finally have come to a consensus of, yeah, we can provide some access, you know, to get an effective road in there. So the bill for Waterworks, the part that talks about trying to help the landowners in there to, so that, you know, they have access to their property so they can develop it, so that they can contribute to the tax base, is, can be achieved through what's already in the law, through the landowner's recovery fund. That's what I've, I've seen here. So, that's pretty much, pretty much what I would like to give. Oh, you're going to get the rest of it.
So, so I think the difference between, I mean, through your research, you've found that there's already other avenues to be able to, to, to do the kind of things that, that Section F proposes to do. But Section F kind of just goes directly to it. But I think with Section F, what I want to do is I want to facilitate moving the bill forward to get it on the session agenda. So if, if Section F is a provision that is causing concern to the Ancestral Lands Commission, we could, you know, we can take that out and save that, come back for another day for another conversation to discuss how we move, how, how does the Ancestral Lands Commission move forward?
Yes.
But I don't necessarily want to hold back the Ancestral Lands Commission, I mean, the Guam Waterworks, because timing also is important with their getting site control. And, and so that's how I would like to proceed with this. This plus, there was a couple of other, I think he had a couple of other recommendations. Mr. Borja, that, gosh, I know I had it here. Oh, the rezoning, instead of rezoning it here, is to put it through the GLUC. I mean, I don't know, is that a process that's going to take another 120 days?
Well, I hope not. I mean, this was something, be something that we would want to expedite as well with all our, with all the review committee members to try and get that through. But that's our recommendation. I mean, it can still be legislatively passed, but we, our recommendation is that we would like it to be put through the Guam Land Use Commission. But I don't think it would definitely be a showstopper.
Do you, do you know if we sent notice to the surrounding landowners of this property? No? Okay. Because it seems that your, the recommendation to put it through the GLUC may be for the purpose of actually notifying the, the surrounding landowners. And if that's the case, we may be able to, to achieve that same thing. But we'll take a look at this and, and we'll, we'll, we'll work it out over the next couple of weeks so that we can move this thing forward and get it on the session agenda and be able to achieve really the fundamental objective of the bill, and that's to get them site control.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one more thing. It's a resolution from the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. If I may just go over it real quick and I'll provide a copy to the committee as well. This is Resolution Number 2016-01, Declaration and Designation of Land for Guam Waterworks Authority Infrastructure Development. Basically, we go through and we, we discuss the need for the land and, and for the compensation of the land and that the land be put into, the monies earned should be put into the land bank trust. On October 26th, 2016, the Ancestral Lands Commission Board of Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting in Timuning reviewed the draft bill presented by Guam Waterworks Authority at that meeting and approved by motion to designate as available approximately 70,000 square meters of a portion of Anderson Communications Annex Number 1 in the municipality of Dedido as necessary for the public good to be assigned with compensation to the Guam Waterworks Authority by legislative action and that compensation be deposited to the land bank trust for future use to acquire other fee simple real property. Now therefore being resolved, number one, the Ancestral Lands Commission Board of Commissioners approves and declares the designated property, approximately 70,000 square meters of AJKD, municipality of Dedido, be available as designated property for the Guam Waterworks Authority Infrastructure Development, who will be fully responsible for any and all land surveys, land registration and land appraisals as necessary. The Guam Ancestral Lands Commission authorizes the execution of a right of entry for the designated property identified above to the Guam Waterworks Authority. The Guam Waterworks Authority shall compensate the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission Land Bank Trust the fair market value of the designated property identified. The Guam Ancestral Lands Commission as trustees shall reinvest the compensation by purchase of another property for the continued benefit of the land bank trusts and beneficiaries. And the Guam Ancestral Land Commission Board of Commissioners transmits this resolution to the Guam Legislature with its recommendation to include the designated property in legislation to assign it to the Guam Waterworks Authority with compensation to be determined by, within a specified period of time in the enacted law. This was a unanimous motion passed by all seven members of the board and it's signed by six of them. One of them was unavailable to sign because he's off island for medical purposes, but I will provide a copy of this to the commission, to the committee.
Has legal, has your legal counsel given an opinion as to, just as the law requires that if you're going to sell land, it requires legislative authorization? If you're going to buy land, is that going to require legislative authorization?
We didn't come across that. It's the, but I don't think we saw anything as, well, that's what we're asking, that the money, what we're looking is to have the authorization to use that money to buy the land. We, we can't spend the money on something else without legislative authorization. That's what the intent of that request is.
Yeah, but to get, I don't know that that would get through the legislature to authorize to purchase land not knowing where it's going to be.
Okay.
So.
But the, well, then the perp.
So the bottom, I think probably the simplest is that it should go into the land bank.
And if we find something, come back and say, here's the piece of property, here's the value, we'd like to purchase it at. It shouldn't be anything greater than what we received and then get authorization for both.
Does anybody have, I don't know what the per square meter value is of that property up at Harmon, but is there any? Can you go back to that? What, no, the other, what might be the estimated sale value of that 17 acres?
I did not, I do not have any information on that right now, on what the values of that would be. I mean, let me take a look, I might be able to find something.
Guam Waterworks, did you have any?
Yeah, Senator, first off, I want to say thank you very much for your kind agreement in taking out Section F to move this process along. Thank you very much. Secondly, I don't think there are any real hard and fast appraisals in this area. So therefore the appraisals we will do will help in determining future, future values for that area.
I've heard the figure of about $30, $30 per square meter, not $270 like in Tumon.
Oh, no.
Okay. No, so, and, and the other thing I would like to point out is, while I do usually appreciate the, the Director of Land Management's thoughts on going through the land use process, we have an urgent requirement for this property now. And the second thing is, really, while I sympathize with the landowners in the area, the sewage treatment plant has been there since 1970, in the 70s. And one of the overriding things that came out from US EPA when the first military buildup started and they talked about building another sewage treatment plant, I believe in radio Baragata, when they were looking at areas in Marbo South or somewhere Antes South, was US EPA came out and was very adamant and says there's not going to be another sewage treatment plant over the northern Aquifer, and they were not going to allow anybody to move that sewage treatment plant. So it's, it's stuck there. And I appreciate the fact that there was a zoning done for hotel for that whole area, but I think in reality, people should have come to, should have considered the fact that the sewage treatment plant is there, not going anywhere, and it's not going to be conducive to hotel zone.
If, if it took 120 days or whatever to get through the GLUC to achieve, to get it rezoned, it really shouldn't hamper what GWA needs to do, right? Because the provision, Section 2B directs that the administrative transfer of the property shall become effective upon enactment so that GWA can go in and start doing its geotechnical survey, doing its whatever it needs to do for its design work, right? So if it took 120 days to get through GLUC, it really should be no big deal for you guys.
The only concern I would have, Senator, is if the community started to say, well, we don't want it. I mean, that, I, I just don't want to go down a road and give the community the hope that they can say, well, you know, we've decided we don't want.
There's nothing to say that when it gets on the floor, the community representatives will get through other senators and say, we don't support it, vote no on it. So it could happen either way.
Mr. Chairman, I would defer to your, to your.
Yeah, I think, I think you should be satisfied with Section 2B that you would get administrative control, site control, so you can go in and start doing your preliminary work.
Okay.
While it goes through the GLUC as they are asking.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Anything else?
The price is approximately $19.39 a square meter.
Okay, so I just priced it out at $30, $30 per square meter. And that's about, that's about 2.1 million.
But that's the assessed value.
Understand, yeah. And I'm just, I just, I just, I just asked that so that there's no misconception that, you know, this was going to bring in 50 million bucks or anything like that. Okay, is there anything else on this particular bill?
Going back to, yes, taking out that section for now and so that we can address it as its own. The same, the same 12 GCA landowner's recovery fund, one thing I did find there is that the managing of the funds should be Guida.
Correct. I think that's Section 74105.
Yeah. And definition of the land bank, going to the question of permission to go buy other lands or other income producing, I think we're fine with that. But there is a, there is a, the second paragraph on 2545 under land bank, the sub-paragraph E, the commission shall establish a Guam-based trust to administer all the assets and revenues of the land bank, of the affirmation lands and manage the lands and act as developer of the lands. So it talks about developing existing lands. And so there's a, I think that part where we need to get permission to get other lands is because this piece of land is, is going to be used for Guam Waterworks. And in our initial discussion with them was, can you guys lease it? And they said, not according to the funds that they're getting. So that's why we, we say, okay. So because it's unique, it's a unique set of turning a property to money, we wanted to, to see if we could turn that money to more property so that it can continue to be income producing. Interest rates in the banks will make, will make a lot for us if it stays in there.
Okay, great. All right, so if there's no further testimony on Bill 393, then we'll consider Bill 393 as having been duly heard. Thank you very much. We have the next bill, and I'm going to ask, let's just take a one-minute recess. The Committee on Lands calls this hearing back to order. We're now going to be discussing Bill Number 394-33, which is an act to amend Section 80, 80103 of Chapter 80 of Title 21 GCA relative to the confirmation of Guam ancestral land commissioners. And what prompted this bill is the fact that unlike the ancestral lands commission, or the Guam land use, oh, there's so many commissions, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, those commissioners and really just about any other boards and commissions, they're required to undergo legislative confirmation. I think that the work that the ancestral lands commission does actually warrants consideration of having the land use commission, the ancestral lands commissioners undergo legislative confirmation. And it's, and actually the provisions are patterned after the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. So signing up to testify on Bill 394-33 is Anthony Ada. And you're going to provide oral testimony?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please.
I'll follow it up with Richard.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, step forward.
Okay, Senator, this is, I agree with this bill. You're right. And I tried to understand why this was being put into place. I see that this is to make it uniform amongst the boards and commissions. You know, they, they have a responsibility to do whatever board is asking them to do, so it's good that everybody finds out whether they are the right person to go in there, right?
Well, it's, I guess, yes, it will make it, it will make the requirement similar to other boards and commissions. But actually, what prompted the bill was in recognition of the fact that the work that the ancestral lands commission does and the responsibility that is put on it is quite significant. And as a result, I believe that the legislative confirmation is warranted.
In order, yes. Okay, and then on page one where it talks about the terms, again, trying to understand this, one shall be appointed for one year, two for two years, and then two for four years. So that's one.
So that's to achieve a staggered term.
A staggered, yes.
So that not everybody expires in four years and then you, and then if, you know, the governor decides to appoint a totally different-
And then there's a learning curve.
Then there's a learning curve.
And there's no continuity, right?
Correct, yeah.
So if we count the, you know, one, two, and two, yeah, one, two, and two, that's five. So right now on the board, there are seven.
Oh, there's seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll adjust.
First appointed to, okay, two shall be appointed for one year.
Yeah.
Two shall be appointed for two years.
Yes.
And two shall be appointed for four years. So that's six.
That's six, yeah.
We currently have seven.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Seven, okay. So we'll make adjustments to that.
And the staggering is good because to learn all these things that surround ancestral lands, it's kind of, there's a lot more involved. I mean, you really need to be in it for a while to really see the whole picture and understand it. There's a lot of reading to do and a lot of conversation. So the, I have no problem with this. The only thing concerned is that, okay, if this bill is passed through, the current board members have 90 days and then, unless a replacement is duly confirmed sooner than that. Question, if this stays in here, then can the governor, to align with this, reappoint the existing ones or does it want new people to come inside?
Oh, no. It only says that 90 days plus three legislative days, normally a legislative day, that's about, that's about equivalent to three months.
Okay.
So every time the Speaker brings the legislature into session and then adjourns it a week later, that's one legislative day. So we're talking about then three months plus another three months, so that's six months.
Okay.
If the govern, you know, I would hope that the governor would be able to get the necessary packet in to the legislature to either reappoint you guys or to appoint somebody new or whatever.
Okay. And so then, this will effectively put the current commission on hold to not do anything until this occurs? That's one question. And the other one is every four years, it's customary for board members to do a courtesy resignation. And the current governor has, what, all of next year and 2018, right, is the gubernatorial? So we're going to be returning in our resignations anyway in about two years.
There's actually, I'm glad that you brought that up. There's actually language and other pieces of legislation which prohibits turning in, submitting courtesy resignations as a result of the change of administration. We'll have to take a look at that language.
Yeah, I think the intent on that one is that you don't want a new governor coming in and having to deal with people that he doesn't really know if he doesn't know them. I think that's the reason for courtesy, because it gives the new governor a chance to, I mean, if he turns around and says, I'd like for you to stay, then maybe that's good. But I'm just trying to understand the whole process of this.
Understand. And probably, probably need to make that more clear. But I guess the point that you bring up is that if, of course, a new, when a new administration comes in, and a new administration will come in because this, you know, this is going to be the end of his term, it's really up to the individual if he decides, you know, I would like to step down, and then he can reappoint. That's, those mechanics. But the point is, is that I'll have to take a look at the other language that addresses that.
Yeah. Then the part that talks about the quorum, that's good, four to constitute a quorum, and a vote of four to act, right? Right now we have it as a vote of five. So four is probably make it more efficient if somebody didn't make it to the meeting. So I'm just bringing out what I see in the current law and what is being introduced.
Understand. And I too, when I saw that it takes four to establish quorum, but it takes five, and four is the majority.
Yes.
Takes five to-
Determine a land claim.
Oh. Five commissioners present shall constitute a quorum to determine a land claim. So it seems that for any other, the way the law is written right now, for just administrative matters, all you need is a vote of four.
Right.
But when it comes to land claims, it takes five.
We, yeah, we can entertain the claimant, but we cannot act on it if we don't have the five to say, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, unless you have some other recommendation, I was just trying to go on the premise that the majority, there's got to be, you know, it takes four to establish quorum and-
And also act.
Four to, to make a decision.
Yeah, that's good. Because sometimes five cannot make it.
Right.
I mean, we've had that experience where something comes up and somebody calls and says, we can't make it. So we can look at the claim, we can do some discussion, but we cannot act on it, we cannot vote on it because there's not five. But if we make it four, then the four that were sitting there can do it, and that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I thought so.
Okay. All right. Mr. Laguanyi?
Tagi, tagi. Afaray, si not sinadot tamada.
Afaray.
Si Ronu laguanyazu, zah membruzu pao gu gini gi komishon. Stalaa mamna mu membruzu gini. Lo afabotu nestina lae napreniponi. Feradi zi i, gimi na dos na paheina gi uno dos dan tres. Guakustionu netzu sa, estagi man lo fandosimana. Estaman afanhula hamni gobetnu zasta man mapreba ham. Ko para, para patatso gya stitalo na patan man mahungukid uzunki. Man listratura zapatavan mapreba ko, patavan membru. Sa paraguau, zahu na u mapasas tinalai. Lo lekuna para iman malofan na membru maaplikas tisha na klosi sa mpata. Paguavastaman afanhula hamne zaduru statece tu mona. Za, tizano u guaginadun mona zangin, guati mangonfot mini, uno gi man membru sia. Lo edza na patia kalana zau na umana suha. Za kosaki iman mama laisha na membru. U aprikano van ma, man afanhula talu omama hunguk, zoma konfitma. Sa kubomapasas ti sempimabiretta titalo za kalama di roga i konfitmashon ya imaga lohi. Edza i puntoku gini pao na babiketungu sa afana patabiretta talu taktina stasi gehitmona. Edza, si not.
Okay, yeah, as Commissioner Laguanyi was speaking, there was one more point I just wanted to clarify, the one year and then the two years and the four years, that's to make a staggered, staggered membership so that there's continuity as we go on. But I say the one-year person, and I think in the beginning of the sentence it goes, the term is going to be four years. So just for clarification, the person's going to be, first appointment is going to be one year. To establish the staggered appointing, he go for one year, but then he can be, after that, he gets reappointed for the four. That moves him into the stagger, right? That was the idea behind that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if, let's say, the guy that's appointed for four years, he, for whatever, for whatever reason, he has to vacate, let's say in the second year, so if they appoint somebody for that position, he only serves for the remainder of that term, the four years, not the, so it'll be edzai tetinan the two years. Yeah. Mr. Eklavea?
Buenas, Senator, Commissioner Ron Eklavea.
Yes, sir.
And congratulations on your reelection, also.
Thank you.
Basically, I'm concerning the five, the quorum?
Yes.
I'm wondering, I think we still, I think we still need to keep five because I think you need, if you have four, you need, I think you need four to pass, and if, if we have five and one dissents, I think, is that correct?
Well, you have, you have, you have, the membership, the number of members on the commission is seven, and so the majority would be 50% plus one, 50% plus one.
Yeah, so.
So that's three, four, I don't know, maybe five.
Yeah, so it might be, it might be, it might be, yeah, I think it might be five.
Yeah, but see, the old-
Well, look at it, I'm just-
The old, the old law requires, just requires four commissioners to establish quorum.
Yeah.
Right? Lo, lo zangin, you're gonna pun diskuti pu tonu, pues necesitanu cinco.
So I'm just bringing that to the attention, bringing that to the attention, yeah.
I changed my mind, I agree. It's a tiebreaker. Como dos nu devot, i cuatro devot, zah dos, un gan dos no, no, you need a tiebreaker.
You need chairs and people.
All right, a chair is going to be part of it.
I'd like to thank our Deputy Director and our Honorable Commissioner.
So you're recommending keeping it at five?
Reminding us of this.
Five for quorum and five to carry a decision.
Yeah.
Wait.
Five to carry it.
Can I go ahead and speak?
Five to carry it through.
Five.
One moment, one moment.
Okay.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, with Guam ancestral land commission, this is a very unique commission. Land issues are very sensitive, and that's why we have seven at present, five for deciding on application, four a land claim, four for administrative matters. And that's the reason why that we have that, because, like I said, it's a unique commission and also land issues are very sensitive, that we need to have, you know, working hand-in-hand so that we could decide, look at all the documents they submit, and it's well processed if we have the five members to make that decision. With four just administrative matters, that's okay, what is within the office or what, but with the land issue. And also-
Does the commission actually go through each application and does the administrative-
Yes, we do.
Review them?
We do.
You don't have a staff?
And before that, they do.
There's no staff?
No, the packet, when we do a title hearing.
Is there a staff that goes through a packet to make sure that all the documents-
Oh, okay, that, yes, the research, everything is there to make sure that that land claim is-
Understand, but who does that? The staff?
We have this-
Or the commission?
The staff.
Okay.
In which, we're very shorthanded, we have like one.
Understand. So the staff goes through the actual analysis and making sure that all the necessary documents are there, then they make their recommendation to the commission, correct? And then the commission then will decide whether that the claim as presented is valid or not, right? So when you say it's unique, I mean, it's, it has a different set of responsibilities and tasks-
Right.
-in comparison to like the Chamorro Land Trust.
Right.
So I think it's unique in that respect.
Right.
But otherwise, the responsibilities, you know, it still has fiduciary responsibilities.
We have our fiduciary responsibility.
But if the board finds that, you know, take, that you should establish five for quorum, five, you know, otherwise you get into a situation, is this a land claim, is this administrative or what? Maybe you should just, if you're going to make a decision, it takes five, whatever. Yes?
Thank you.
Senator, real quick, one of the criteria that we have at the present moment is that we, the members must be an owner, an heir, or a descendant of the, of ancestral property.
Yeah, and that's not being changed.
Yeah, also.
So that prerequisite still remains. The only thing that remains is that the members have to undergo the advice and consent of the legislature. the, um, the advice and consent of the legislature, which basically means we come down here, we review the packet and, uh, your nomination packet and, and, you know, there's the manakun, man kombitashon, um, that, but, or not, just put the legislature in that comfort zone that you're, you're the nominee that, that will definitely look out for the interests of, of the landowners, that's, that's all it is, to put, but, or, uh,
But I think there's, that's a slight difference compared to, to the other criteria for Chamorro Land Trust, I think there's might, that might be a, a little deviation, I think, in qualifications, right?
Uh, yeah, in the case of the ancestral lands, you've gotta be a, an heir
An heir, yeah.
Uh, of the returned lands, to, to be, to sit on, yeah, Tony.
Okay, Senator, the, um, as to administrative matters, there's two parts to, um, our mandate, right? The land claims, early on was one after the other, and it was the bigger part of our job, but now managing of the lands, you know, it might be a renewal for lease, following up and, uh, late payment, uh, a request to come in, those are stuff that goes on, uh, in addition, so that would kind of fall under the administrative part, and you're right, the staff at, uh, at land management put the packet together, and they make our work easier really, because if it's not in order, they ask the claimant, you know, go get your family tree or go get this other document, right? So, by the time it comes into us, many times the staff sits right next to the claimant, and the claimant, um, uh, staff will present each document and as we go through it, and it, it, it expedites it, but as for the administrative matters, there, there are other, the other part of it, the, the, um, some question or some request for, to be, uh, what do you call that, a, a tenant or a, a lessie of the land bank, uh, property.
We, we could, you know, as, as, as written right now, we could, um, we could, uh, leave it at four commissioners to establish quorum, that way, uh, you can officially meet and carry on a discussion, um, and, and, and if it's an administrative matter, make a decision. Uh, but if, um, if it's a land claim, then I guess the way that it was written before, it's gotta, uh, if you have five commissioners, then that's basically two-thirds, and that's, that's what we do here, so we can pass, uh, legislation based on, uh, the majority, eight, but if the governor vetoes it and we're gonna override it, then it takes two-thirds, and then it takes ten.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kinda, all right, but we'll look at that and, uh, and we'll, we'll make the necessary adjustments. Okay, anything else? You know? Okay? Well, I, the, 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 lekuna nu, the bill doesn't look to kick out, um, you know, so I mean, I think the suggestion that you have is that, but, oh, to apply it prospectively, so if everybody is saying that you're gonna, see, I, I don't, I don't even know the governor's appointment, I'll have to go back and take a look. If the governor appoints you, are you there forever until he points, appoints somebody else, or does it expire when, when he gets out of office? I, I, I'm not sure, I'll have to take a look at that, and, yours has an expiration date?
Yeah, we all have an expiration date.
Well, then that might take care of itself then, and, uh, Yeah, okay. It's okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, we have to turn in our resignations at the end.
Yeah. Alright, so then if there's no, uh, further testimonies or questions, the committee on lands, uh, certifies that this public hearing is complete, and it's now two forty, uh, and we are adjourned.
Just pass it.